It's nice being to order, please rise for a pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll make a motion adopt tonight's agenda. Under the consent agenda, I'd like to add item H, hiring of five probationary firefighters.
A second.
The motions have been made in second and a discussion. Hearing none to the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the motion passes. On the presentations, our monthly sheriff's report. Senator Peters.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Uh, June had a total of four hundred and forty calls for service, which was actually down a hundred calls uh, from our, from the previous month of May. Our deputies responded to one burglary, a theft, one assault, and a damage to property call. We made a total of nine custodial arrests for miscellaneous violations, and their traffic enforcement efforts resulted in the issuance of twenty-two traffic citations on our roadways. So, uh, we had had a conversation several, several times over the last month, Mayor. We, we had an increase in traffic violations at Highway sixty-five and Viking Boulevard, as we had previously discussed, and um, we had been paying a lot closer attention to those areas, which resulted in two citations for written warnings that month, and that's all that was actually broadcast to me. I'm sure that there's probably more. Um, but I, I told our deputies to let me know if they did in fact take enforcement action at that intersection, and uh, that's what we had this month. So, um, we will continue that saturation detail throughout the summer, especially during the higher traffic volume times during the day.
Good.
Some other notable calls our deputies have handled this past month include, um, a DWI on six twenty-seven of twenty twenty-two. Deputy Olson stopped a vehicle on a hundred and eighty-fifth Avenue Northeast in Lexington for driving conduct. The vehicle was going slow and failed to signal a turn. Upon contacting the driver, Deputy Olson noticed signs of impairment on the driver. The driver admitted to drinking earlier in the night, but declined to answer any more questions. Deputy Olson had the driver perform standardized field sobriety testing, which he subsequently failed. The driver was placed under arrest for DWI and transported to the Anoka County Sheriff's Office for further testing. While there, the male became belligerent, began fighting with our deputies. The male continued to actively resist, and the deputies, um, had to resort to the use of their taser to bring this male under control. He was re-secured and transported to the Anoka County Jail and charged with DWI refusal. Fortunately, nobody was injured, uh, during this incident at the Sheriff's Office. On June twenty-third, at nineteen twenty-one hours, Deputy Waddle was dispatched to report of a possible no-contact order violation at an address within the city. Deputy Waddle spoke to the reporting party who stated that a male she had a no-contact order against drove past her home and made eye contact with her as she was pulling into the neighborhood. Deputy Waddle received a copy of the order and saw that the order clearly stated that this male should not be within five blocks from the reporting party's home, and determined that this was indeed a violation. Deputy Waddle arrested the male at his home and transported him to jail without incident. On June twelfth, Deputy Madsen was dispatched to an assault situation involving a female who had been dragged from a vehicle by her boyfriend and left on the side of the road. Deputy Madsen met with the reporting party and observed injuries consistent with being pulled from a vehicle. Deputy Madsen completed a statement from the victim and learned that the male half involved in the assault may have possibly gone to his residence in Isani County. Isani County was requested to place the male under arrest for assault, and eventually made contact with him and did. Deputy Madsen met Isani County and took custody of the male, and obtained a statement from him as well. The male was transported to the Anoka County Jail and cited for domestic assault. Deputies Yantos and Deputy Swatzky responded to a report of a robbery that occurred at a residence in the two-four-three-hundred block of Highway sixty-five Northeast. On arrival, deputies Yantos and Swatzky contacted the reporting party who stated that he had been inside of his residence and heard a knock at the front door. When he opened the door, he was confronted by two males in ski masks holding a handgun. These males were reported to have forced their way into the residence and demanded valuables from the reporting party and another occupant that was inside of the home at the time. The reporting party stated that he gave the suspects a large sum of cash from an unlocked safe. The suspects also took the RP's phone and wallet before leaving. So, uh, by use of a tracking app on the cellphone, the deputies located the phones a short time later underneath a set of trees just east of where the residence is. The phones were then collected for processing by our crime scene unit detectives. Our on-call CID detective responded and took taped statements from everyone involved and a witness who had been in the home at the time of the robbery. The reporting party declined to provide consent for our staff to process the residence until he had time to speak with the actual homeowner. At this point, there is no viable suspect information, and the investigation is ongoing. So, just following up with that call, um, during the month here, as a reminder for everybody, if you hear a knock at the door in the middle of the night, please don't answer it unless you know who it is. Um, and if you see anything or anyone suspicious, please give us a call. That's, that's what we're here for. Just dial nine-one-one and we'll send somebody out right away. And lastly, um, as mentioned before, we continue to have traffic issues at sixty-five and Viking. Saturation details in that area will occur and continue during rush hour traffic, and we will have our deputies positioned there as time allows. Uh, obviously, they're, um, responsible for calls for service, but when things slow down or during high-traffic-volume times, they will be there. So, um, please slow down and understand that if you are stopped, you will be significantly delayed longer than you would had you simply just stopped for the red light. That's what we're seeing a lot of. So, um, any other traffic violations can be promptly reported to nine-one-one, and we'll send somebody out to check. Thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to brief the council this evening.
Good. Any questions from council tonight? Okay. Any questions from the audience? Yes?
Um, just recently, uh, the sheriff's department is doing, um, from what I understand, transport for, uh, for dogs. Uh, is that gonna be in your monthly report?
The transporting of the dogs or significant calls is usually what I include in the monthly report, but I do have, I do have some stats in the back here. Yes.
Um, a few when this was first getting started, um, I asked the question of what that uh, responsibility, uh, as far as the sheriff's department was gonna cost, um, to say it respectfully. Do, do we, if you didn't have that number, um, back then, um, I'm wondering if we had a number now?
Yeah, I, uh, I can certainly look back on, on what we've got here, and we're talking about getting the twenty-twenty-three contract approved, and those numbers will be broke down, and I can, I can certainly follow up with council.
Great, thank you.
So Derek, that's, that's specifically CSOs, all right? The deputies are not involved unless it's a weekend or something, correct?
Correct. The CSO should be doing the transports one hundred percent of the time, minus anything significant.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions from the audience?
Well, not a question, but comment. I have to share happy news, because I was driving out on sixty-five this morning to actually go into the office, and I got in a pack of cars, and they were just going seventy-one miles an hour, which is kind of late. I buy eighty, which is really scary.
Yeah, instead of the eighty miles an hour that we sometimes see. Thank you for letting me know that. Appreciate it.
Okay, anything else? All right. Thank you, Derek. Have a good night. Our monthly fire report. Chief Descharmes.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. So, June two thousand twenty-two, uh, seventy-five calls. Uh, we have fifty-nine of those were medical-related. Uh, we only responded to one car crash, which, which is great. Uh, and our burning and, uh, illegal burning and, and things like that was minimal, and I appreciate that. We had a couple fires. One was, uh, a cigarette ashtray that fell into a planter that, uh, caught a little bit of siding and a little bit of, uh, decking on, on fire. And able to, a homeowner was able to extinguish that, and then we had a vehicle fire. Uh, just as a point of, uh, information, uh, year-to-date, we're at five hundred and nine calls, and we're about fifteen percent ahead of last year at this time. So, that, that number keeps, uh, keeps on, ongoing. This coming Tuesday, or about, uh, yeah, next Tuesday is, uh, a week from tomorrow, uh, National Night Out, and Fire Department will be out visiting parties and things like that. And I see the sheriff's department, uh, sent out the list of parties that are in, uh, East Bethel, and we'll try to have a fire truck there at, at all of them, uh, at least at one point in, in the evening. Any questions?
Mark, is there any issues with burning permits? I know it's getting dry again.
Well, there hasn't been any talk as, as far as, or chatter, uh, as far as putting restrictions on, but we are having grass fires, uh, although we haven't had East Bethel grass fires, but I did notice today there were a couple, and over the weekend, I also heard a, a couple of them. I, I can tell you, we were at a fire in Oak Grove on, uh, on Friday night, and the grass around the house burnt quite a ways. So, did, uh, you know, it is, it is starting to get dry. We could use a couple inches of rain, no doubt about that, and the lakes are getting a little bit low.
Any other questions from council? Any questions from the audience for Fire Chief? All right.
Ten-four.
All right. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Thanks, Mark.
Okay, on to our consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Second.
I want, I'd like to pull item H.
H, you said?
H is in hat, yeah.
Okay, and I'd like to pull item C.
I'd like to pull item D, as in dog.
Okay.
And then with D and G.
So, we have A, E, and F. Okay, any further discussion? To the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Okay, on to item B.
I did D, not B.
Yeah, I, I pulled D, not B.
Okay, I heard D twice, okay.
Okay.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve item, well, we kept it in there, so never mind. Item C. I was not present for the, uh, meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve item C.
I'll second it.
Motion made, second and discussion. Hearing none to the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? The motion passes. Item D.
I would just like to make a motion to approve item D.
Is there a second to the motion? Any discussion?
Uh, with that, uh, Mr. Berg is in the audience. I think he'll be a fine addition to the city with his expertise and background, and just like to say thanks for, thanks for working for the city and for its residences.
I'd like to add, thank you for being a great intern and showing us what you could do, and with that, we really didn't have to do much to discover an internal candidate for the position.
No, he's an outstanding candidate. Uh, I think he's above and beyond. I, I know you had a case here, and everybody was, uh, pretty impressed with one of your cases, the attorneys and everybody, so I just want to say welcome aboard.
Okay, I too want to say welcome. I'm glad you have been working out so well. I'm glad you're here tonight. Um, but I do have a question regarding this whole thing, and that is the part where you're changing the title to city planner. Um, can you explain why we're doing that?
We're doing that because the title of zoning administrator is an outdated title, and in the future, any applicants for this job are gonna be more attracted to this. Uh, also, the duties of the position relate more to a city planner than they do to a zoning administrator, particularly. A zoning administrator's duties are really restricted to those areas. This area's gonna be expanded to include a lot more activities for Mr. Berg.
So, we will not come back and want a zoning administrator or a code person in the future?
This position includes those duties.
Okay. All right, with that, I will approve item, oh, you already did that, so.
Yep, just have to pull. So, so the, this position description that's in our packet, that's, that's a current position description, correct?
No, that's, well, all we did was change the title, because the, the duties reflect both jobs. This one is more germane to actually what they do in concurrent with what the job market is out there for this position.
So, nothing else was changed?
That's correct.
All right, unless there's any further discussion, uh, to the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? The motion passes. Welcome. Uh, item G.
Item G is me. Uh, this is the, um, purchase of that fire rescue boat. We didn't use the one we had, um, and it sat there, and it, if you remember the last discussion we talked about when we were putting that up for surplus property, it hadn't been used, and it, and due to it not being used, it, uh, had maintenance issues. I, I think it's, uh, a waste of money to try to replace something that we don't even use. So, my vote on this is negative.
Well, my, my understanding as to why it was not used was because it was a improper style of boat to handle the type of activities that the Fire Department needed it for.
And you can only put two people and their gear, and that was it, in the old boat?
We, we've discussed this several times. Um, I'll make a motion to approve item G.
A second.
Motion made, second. Discussion?
I just want to make one more. That this was in the equipment replacement fund too, so.
It's a budget.
Just so you know, so.
And that doesn't mean we have to spend money because it's budgeted in an equipment replacement.
Well, what if something happens on Coon Lakes? What if, what if something happens, and we, we gotta, we have no way of getting out in the water? What if something happens? What do you do?
There's Coon Lake, Cooper Lake, Minar Lake, Nuds Lake, Fish Lake.
And what have they been doing?
They haven't had any rescues, knock on wood.
But we've had incidents on there in the past. What have they done?
Very few incidents. I think the one, the last one was I don't know how many years ago. That was on Coon when it was in the wintertime with the snow.
It was on the ice.
Yes.
Yeah, it was an ice rescue, and unfortunately, one of those people passed away.
Did not make it.
I remember.
Okay.
Yeah, knock on wood, we haven't had any emergencies on the water in summertime. But I know what the activity that Coon Lake itself gets, I mean, the, so, the statistical chances of it happening are there.
And where is the boat gonna be located? Because one of the things they've talked about is they didn't have the space for the last one.
Station one. That's where it's gonna be located.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none to the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Aye.
The motion passes. Item H, Tim.
Um, I would like to, uh, have these gentlemen, and I think there was one lady, she's not here, but can Mitchell, Jordan, Ryan, Amy, and Tyus please stand up? They're the three of the new, five new firefighters. I just want to say, thanks for volunteering, guys, and welcome aboard. And with that, I'll approve item H as written.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion?
Thanks, guys.
Welcome.
Welcome aboard.
Uh, to the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. All right, on to department reports. Jack.
Fall Town Hall Meeting. The Fall Town Hall Meeting is held in November and is proposed for a date as after the general election and doesn't conflict with any other municipal or school district meetings. Staff has reviewed and found there to be no conflicts with the evening meeting schedule or ISD fifteen-eight-thirty-one or any East Bethel commissions or committees in November twenty-twenty-two for the dates listed below. These dates are Thursday, November tenth, Wednesday, November sixteenth, Wednesday, November twenty-third, Wednesday, November thirtieth, Tuesday, November fifteenth, Thursday, November seventeenth, and Tuesday, November twenty-ninth. Direction to this request will enable staff to place information regarding this meeting in the autumn edition of the city newsletter. Submissions for the newsletter will be due August the twelfth, and is scheduled to be distributed September fourth through the tenth. Staff is requesting that city council set a date for the fall twenty-twenty-two Town Hall Meeting.
See, I would have conflicts with the tenth and the seventeenth, and Wednesday, the twenty-third is the day before.
Day before Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving.
I don't want that.
Don't want that.
I think that would should be eliminated.
And really, only Wednesday, Wednesdays and Thursdays work for me, so we'll have to pick one of the Wednesdays, maybe the sixteenth.
Did you say the sixteenth?
Yeah, that's probably the best day.
I'm good with any of the dates, so. Because I lost my calendars. So, it's clear.
And I don't know if I get to vote on this, because my term may be over on the eve.
No, it doesn't matter. I mean, you can vote on it, so. Uh, Wednesday, the sixteenth, is that everyone's?
Won't work for me.
Availability? Okay. And that's, uh, that's the week before Thanksgiving, so.
Yep.
All right.
Make a motion to approve Wednesday, November sixteenth, for the Fall Town Hall Meeting.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any discussion? Hearing none to the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? The motion passes.
And Jack, what would, uh, the time, the hours be for this?
It would be the same format that we used before, six PM in the senior center, reconvene here around seven PM until the adjournment of the meeting.
All right.
Okay, item seven-G two.
July work meeting, uh, actually, it should be August work meeting. Our monthly work meeting is scheduled for Monday, August first, two thousand twenty-two, at seven PM. The following items are recommended for discussion. The twenty-twenty-three preliminary budget, which would be the, hopefully, we can agree to the final setting of the levy, and then the discussion on hemp-based edible THC products, which we were given an update at the last council meeting by Christina Benson with Acworth Glamours. Christina will also be here at the work meeting. We'll discuss options on how we wish to address this matter. The options are essentially do nothing, enact an ordinance to do this at this time, or enact a moratorium for the short term to give us more time to look over what other cities are doing and come up with the best solution to the problem in the short term. Uh, staff recommends that city council set the agenda items as presented for the August first, twenty-twenty-two work meeting, or add items as necessary.
I'd like to add getting an enforcement update if we can, or do we want to do that at a council meeting?
Is a week enough time to get a report together?
Yeah, we can do.
It's not even a week. You'd have to do it like by Thursday, right?
Yeah, well, I think we can get something ready for the August.
Some of the big ones that we've discussed, and, and I haven't heard an update on.
All right.
That'd be worthwhile. Uh, does anyone else have anything to add? Want to talk about adding?
Um, just one thought, that maybe push it to September or October would be a update on the Ice Arena projects.
We can, we can, we can give you that. We can get you some photographs to.
We're still in process though, right?
That's correct, and it really looks good. They've made a lot of progress. They've got all the interior walls painted. The new logo's up, uh, the bathroom scheduled. Everything's on schedule. It'll be completed.
What we, what we do for the council meeting.
Council meeting.
Not council.
Council meeting, it's, okay.
Give it more time to get stuff done too, so.
Yeah, so maybe first council meeting in September.
Yeah, it looks a lot different, bro. I was over there last week. It really looks good. The lobby's cleaned out, the, everything's clean, the beams, the bathrooms are gutted, getting ready to go back together, but it looks good.
I mean, how about we leave the staff, but by, at least by first part of September, get a report?
That's fine.
Okay.
Maybe another tour.
Yeah, a, a, anytime that anybody would like to take, take a tour.
I know every time.
Let us know, and we can go down there individually and take a look at the progress.
Okay, anything else to add to work in the agenda? If not, uh, a motion with the addition?
Make a motion to approve, uh, items one, two, and three, number three being enforcement update as the agenda for the work meeting for August.
I'll second it.
Motion made, second. Discussion. Hearing none to the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? The motion passes. And G three, Chief, Fire Chief Interview Panel.
Fire Chief Mark Descharmes and City Council accepted his notice of retirement effective October fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two. City Council authorized the advertisement of this position on July the eleventh, twenty-twenty-two. Advertisements have been placed in the Anoka Union Herald, the City of East Bethel, League of Minnesota Cities, Minnesota Fire Department Association, Minnesota State Fire Marshal Mail List, Minnesota, Minnesota State Fires Chiefs Association, Anoka County Fire Protection Council, St. Croix Valley Firefighters Association, and the Metro Chiefs Association websites. Additional postings are on eastbethlejobs.com. They will be on the city reader board, cable channel ten, and have been posted on the city's social media outlets. Applications will be accepted until three PM, August twelfth, two thousand twenty-two. Staff will evaluate the applications and select those qualified candidates for interviews the week of August twenty-second through twenty-six, twenty-twenty-two. Staff recommends that an interview panel for this position be appointed by council. Recommendations for the panel would include Mark Descharmes along with two council members, the city administrator, and the city finance HR director. This panel would convene on the dates selected for the interviews. The interviews would require at least one full day to complete. A second interview round may be necessary, depending on the final ranking of the candidates. Recommendation for a hire will be brought to city council by September twelfth, two thousand twenty-two. Staff is requesting that city council consider creating an interview panel for the candidates for the position of the City of East Bethel Fire Chief, and name two city council members for the panel.
I'd like to put my name in there. I'd like to be part of that interview team.
I'd volunteer for that interview.
I'd like to too, but.
But?
They can if they, they spoke first.
So, I.
You have interest?
I have an interest, but, uh, if Tim and Wanda want to do it, I will, that is just fine by me. I'm sure they will make a, a great decision on that. Um, one, one person I would like to consider adding to this panel is, uh, our retired Sheriff Salai Azan, uh, Comma, Commander Orlando.
Why, why do you want us to just have?
Because she has very good lifelong experience of emergency situations in reading people, and I think she would be an asset to, to this panel.
I actually think she might be too, and she knows. She's been on the sheriff's for a long time.
Ask if she's, if she's available.
If she's available, yes.
I can check with her.
Um, yeah, I, I can't commit because of that week, that's, that's, that we want to do the interviews. How, how many candidates are you expecting just to interview?
Well, at this time, we don't know, but I would say it could come down to five or six candidates, and then we may even have to do a second round of interviews.
Okay.
So, the, the, the time on this would involve at least one, probably, full day to do the interviews, because these interviews will probably last at least an hour. Uh, and then based on what the panel comes up with, there may have to be a second round to do the two or three finalists.
And you, the suggestion I would make is, um, you state here that, that staff will select who to be interviewed. I, I, to me, I think the panel should get copies of the resumes. If there's some that truly aren't qualified, I understand, but I, I think if you want, you know, buy-in by everyone on, on the panel, probably better have everyone look at the resumes.
We, we can certainly do that and just automatically eliminate those that don't meet the criteria of
Right.
the application.
The technical criteria.
And, and call the panel together then the week of, after we review those, before we do the interviews, so they can take part in the selection process.
So, Wanda and Tim?
Sure.
Okay, I'm, I'm fine with that too. I'll make a motion that, uh, uh, we create an interview panel uh, for a purpose of obtaining our new, uh, Fire Chief. Uh, that panel to consist of our city administrator, Mike Jorski, our finance director, uh, Wanda McLaren, and Tim Har. Mike Jorski, our finance director, uh, Wanda McLaren, and Tim Harrington, and then we'll, uh, query, uh, Charlotte Orlando, uh, to see if she's interested in being on the panel.
I'll second.
Motion made second, discussion. Good luck, it's a big, it's a big hire, so.
Big shoes to fill.
Yeah.
Most important shoes. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Item four.
Midcontinent Site Lease Extension Rent. In May twenty thirteen, city council approved a lease agreement with Midcontinent Communications that allowed them to relocate their control cabinet and generator from the southeast corner of the city hall site to the southwest corner of the city hall parking lot. This relocation was necessary to upgrade their optical transition node, which is the fiber optic equipment that feeds the optical nodes for this segment of their system. The two thousand thirteen lease was for ten years and contained a renewal option. Midco has informed staff that they would like to exercise their extension option on the site lease with the city. The lease calls for good faith negotiations on the annual rent in the amount for the next ten years. The current rental agreement ends on May first, twenty twenty-three. The annual payment for the May first, twenty twenty-two through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three year was two thousand three hundred and forty-eight dollars and fifty-nine cents. Midco has proposed a payment beginning May first, twenty twenty-three in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars with the annual three percent increases through the term of the lease extension. The city attorney has reviewed the lease and commented that the agreement is typical and fair to the city. The city attorney recommends and Midco has offered to execute an addendum to the lease in which the parties acknowledge that Minco is exercising its right to extend this agreement for ten years and all terms and conditions of the optical transition node lease dated May fifteenth, twenty thirteen will remain in full force with the exception of section three rent and within that section with the rent for one year of the ten-year extension period set at twenty-five hundred per year beginning May first, twenty twenty-three and increasing three percent annually. The contract addendum will be offered for approval at a later date upon receipt of the document and any additional recommendations from the city attorney. Staff is requesting council approve a rent payment of twenty-five hundred dollars per year with a three percent annual increase and direct that these terms be provided in the addendum to the current lease for the optical transition node site renewal with Midco.
I'll make a motion to, for the approval of rent payment of two thousand five hundred dollars per year with the three percent annual increase and direct that these terms be provided in an addendum to the current lease or the OTN site renewal with Midco.
I'll second it.
Motion made second, discussion.
So Jack, the past existing payments that the city was receiving was twenty-three forty-eight?
That was the last payment that was made to us in April for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three.
Then do, and I assume in previous years it was less than that?
That's correct. It's, it started out at eighteen hundred dollars in twenty thirteen and has gone up three percent annually over the last ten years.
Okay, so at the end of the next ten years, what would the projected lease be?
It's gonna be over three thousand. I don't have the exact numbers on that annualized compounding, so I can get that to you, but it would go up three percent each year.
I was just looking for a round number, so. Okay, thank you.
Is there any other discussion?
Does that, um, money just go into the general fund or is it a specific place for that?
Well, it goes into the general fund and the, the, the real, only real expenses the city has is, you know, we clean, make sure when we snowplow that the, the snow is removed so they have access to that site all the time. We do mow around it, uh, they don't do anything like that. So there is some city expense to it, but it's, it's somewhat nominal. The rest does go into the general fund.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none to the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. On to our staff report.
I'd like to report that our new receptionist recycle coordinator started her position today. Her name is Emily Jabs. She's a former employee of, uh, First Bank and Trust, and, uh, she had a great first day. She was oriented on election training today, and, uh, she promised she would come back tomorrow, so. If, if you're around city hall, please drop by and introduce yourself to her. I think you'll be impressed with her, uh, demeanor and the way she handles herself. Uh, the other item I'd like to mention is in our newsletter for the summer newsletter, we had a small article in there requesting that people that had issues with their broadband service contact city hall to provide us information on their speeds. I would like to encourage them to keep doing that. We've had about fifteen responses so far. What we'd like to do is get at least thirty or forty so we can create a map so we can start identifying some of these areas and concentrations. We do have a meeting set up with Midco for E D A meeting in August in which we're going to discuss some of these things so we can start identifying gaps or pockets in these areas that were reported being served and meet the F C C definition, but just because they meet that definition doesn't mean they're serviced throughout that census tract. So we're trying to start the basis for acquiring this information so we can identify those areas and maybe secure some grants for aids to construction to extend certain projects in these areas that are underserved or not served. So if you've got any information, you can send us on your internet service, please contact me.
Did you get any responses in the box of Booster Days?
We got two.
Two?
Mm-hmm.
That's two more than you had.
Yeah, I, I keep seeing, um, social media posts about Midco being down, internet being down. Are those the kind of reports you want, too, or just that they have slow service?
A- actually, what we really need is what their download and upload speeds are because that's the proof that they need to show that they're either underserved or not served at all. So if they can contact us, we'll give them what information we need to get from them, and the more of that we can get, the better our case can be made to hopefully get some service projects in some of these areas.
Okay, anything else, Jack?
That's it.
Okay, council reports, Wanda.
Um, I really don't have too much, but I do want to thank everybody who was involved in Booster Days. Um, it was a rebuilding year, but I still think it was a great event. Couple people I want to single out, Stephanie and her committee. It was a small committee, but they did really, really well with the people that they had. Uh, Carrie, Jack, and Aaron, who got sucked into transporting us and hauling water and a lot of other things for the parade. Uh, Nate and the Public Works, all the vendors that were there, sheriff and fire department, and all the parade participants. If anybody has suggestions, they can go to boosterdays.com, look at the website. There's an email there, please send them in, and, uh, that's all I have.
And they can join the Booster Day.
They can join the Booster Day committee, they could use some help.
Brian?
Uh, the July planning zoning meeting is canceled. Would have been tomorrow night. Um, otherwise, I'd like to mirror Wanda's statement. Booster Days this year is wonderful, it was a, a different setup, and I think it worked wonderful, and I'm sure a lot of things were learned. And next year will be even better. And so, yeah, a huge shout-out and thanks to the Booster Day Committee, all the volunteers that helped, and to Ms. Stephanie Doran that led the whole thing with the bullhorn. So.
Okay.
Thank you.
Tim?
Um, I too would like to thank, uh, uh, Stephanie, Carrie, Scott, Ricky, Bruce, and Wanda. Um, you know, they were a big part of it, they got, they got everything set up. Uh, Suzanne and I were just kind of the liaisons, and, uh, like I said, September, I think it's sixteenth, we're starting next year. So if you got any ideas, you want to be on the committee, we'll, we'll get the day, date and time and come on down. So next year's gonna be bigger and better. And second of all, the fire department today was forcible entry, and that's all I've got.
Okay, Suzanne?
And that's my comments to her on Booster Days. Um, it was a great day, great event, uh, the bands were amazing. I enjoyed being out there, the parade was amazing. I was shocked at how long it was, and thank you to everybody who participated in setting it up and cleaning it up. It was just a really well-run machine for as small as this community is. Um, there is going to be in September like an after-action review, so if you have ideas to improve it, I'm thinking we need more stuff for teens next year, that's my idea, so. But other than that, let us know. You can go to the boosterdays.com or contact me or Tim or Stephanie. But other than that, that's all I have.
Okay. Um, I want to thank everyone for coming out to Booster Days. It is, it was a really good turnout, so. Um, I think committee did a really good job on, on advertising and about the event and with the signs and social media, so. Um, it was a good day, we didn't get rained out at the end, which was nice.
And the call went right till the last minute on fireworks.
It was a little bit threatening, so.
Yeah.
Um, as, uh, Fire Chief mentioned, next Tuesday's National Night Out, uh, there's, I think there's a dozen of solo neighborhoods are looking at having parties, and, uh, um, so I'm, I'm looking forward to that. And a question, Jack, on the newsletter, uh, earlier in the meeting tonight, we talked about, uh, I forget what subject it was, but, uh, something being due in August twelfth to get into the September newsletter.
The Fall Town Hall.
The, 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 the deadline is to get, yeah.
Um, the one thing I wanted to bring, bring up is that that's also the newsletter where we put the candidate.
Correct.
Bios in.
That's correct.
But it's, but it can't be due August twelfth, though, right?
What we wanted to do is have the submission for the staff articles in by August twelfth.
Oh, okay, okay.
And we'll have to set a time. Do you have a recommendation on when you want the candidate bios? What's the drop dead date on those?
Yeah, because I, I mean, I'd like us to avoid the problem we did last election cycle. I mean, we need to get the, that into the newsletter before the voting actually starts.
That's correct.
Which is September sixteenth, I think.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third, is that when voting starts?
September twenty-third is early voting.
Okay.
So we, we would need them to advance the publications and newsletter up, so we'd have to get that out by around the first of September.
Well, I think it, I think it, you, you, what you had in the, in the write-up was projected, uh, publication for the fourth to the tenth. So, but that should work, I mean, it's before, as long as it gets mailed into the mailboxes.
And, and that, that's something we want to probably take, make sure we do that, give us a week, but set it up earlier, a week earlier. Because sometimes those don't go out real quick. The last one went out really quick. We've had some that went out a week later. They run into problems too with the mail thing, so, uh, if we want to make sure we get this in, then I would suggest that we get everything to the mailhouse by probably the third week in August at the latest then to get it out in time because it can take two weeks once we send it in to get it out.
Because, when's candidate filing, like the second?
Second through the sixteenth.
So give candidates a few extra days after the sixteenth to get the bio in, so.
All right.
I mean, they'll all know they have to do it, or not have to do it, but it's available.
We'll send a notice out to all the candidates that file on the sixteenth or the seventeenth and tell them we need their bios.
Well, Carrie has something in the packet, I remember last time, about the bio and, and.
We'll give them.
I think candidates will know, but.
We'll give them the reminder, though.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, because it, it's so hard for.
Yeah.
People that are voting, even know who they're voting for, so.
Okay.
That's the best way, is that newsletter, getting the bio out to everyone, so. Okay. Uh, and that is all I had. So with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes, our meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Are you ready?
We're gonna, we're gonna.
H R A.
We have a H R A meeting. We ready to go?
We're ready to go.
Okay.
I'll call the order, the July twenty-fifth H R A meeting, annual meeting. Is there a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
I'm making a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion made second, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
We have an agenda. Item number three, approval of the minutes from April twenty-fifth.
Make a motion to approve minutes.
I'll second it.
Motion made second, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Minutes approved. Item number four, quarterly twenty twenty-two budget and H R A updates.
Per Minnesota statute, the East Bethel H R A must prepare and file a budget in accordance with the city budget procedure. The city and H R A approved a preliminary levy amount of seventy-seven thousand dollars for twenty twenty-three to ensure the continued legal status to city H R A as a standalone authority and to provide H R funds for eligible projects. The unaltered cash balance as of July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two was one hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars. The remainder of the twenty twenty-two tax settlement revenue will be distributed to the H R A in December of twenty twenty-two. The H R A account balance is projected to be one hundred and eighty-two thousand, nine hundred and nineteen dollars at year-end, given no unbudgeted expenditures occur in this account. Uh, this is an information item, uh, also in the areas of breakdown of the budget. If anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to answer those.
Item number five, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made second, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you very much.